Good evening, everyone. Thank you for attending tonight, Thursday, December 2nd, 2021, our regularly scheduled Board of Selectmen's meeting. I ask that we call ourselves to order and that we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Our next section would be if there is any additions or changes to the agenda. Gail, did you want to bring up something?
Oh, okay, I was going to do that later, but I can do it now. This is the holiday month, and in view of that and the fact that we have no more pressing business appearing to be coming for the rest of the month, I'd like to see us cancel the next meeting in two weeks, which would be the 16th, and traditionally, we have done this.
Okay, so we can add that to our agenda. That would be new business item.
Item.
Yeah.
Nine, I, yes. Right, Andy?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
If I don't write it in, I'll forget.
I'll write it in.
Okay.
I'll just let you remind you.
Yep. Thank you. Everybody okay with that? Pete?
Yeah, I'm fine. Peter Casper, I'm fine, yeah.
Okay, Tiffany?
Works for me. Thanks.
Okay, and myself, I. Okay, our next section then would be public comment. I don't see or hear of anybody in the talk box or... So hearing none, we will move on to our good to know. Andy?
We don't have anybody for good to know, but that's because we've got a lot of work to do tonight, and we have our resident trooper with us along with hopefully a new appointed police officer. That's going to be the school SRO.
Okay. Yeah, we're reading that, so, okay. Our next section would be appointments and resignations. And it's blocking me. It looks like we have an open space land acquisition committee appointment. And Tiffany Thele has expressed interest in serving as the Board of Selectmen representative on the open spaced land acquisition committee. So I will propose, I'll make the, read the proposed motion, open it up for discussion, move to the Hebron Board of Selectmen to appoint Tiffany Thele to the open spaced land acquisition committee representing the Board of Selectmen. Is there any discussion? Tiffany, did you want to say anything on your behalf?
No, only to say I'm happy to step forward and fill this role, as I know the person that was initially in my spot on the board filled this. It's an interest of mine, and I look forward to working with the land acquisition committee if appointed tonight.
Okay. Any other comments? Then, hearing the proposed motion, all in favor signify by saying aye. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Can Tiffany vote for herself?
I was just gonna ask that, actually.
I don't think so, but we have a core regardless.
Yeah, so I don't think there's gonna be an issue, so.
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. So you're still in.
I was really worried there for a minute, so thank you.
Okay, our next is the appointment of our Hebron Police Officers, and attaches the memo from the resident state trooper Bryce Reed recommending appointment of Thomas Tapulos?
Tapulos.
Okay, I am great at butchering names, in case you haven't figured it out. If it's more than two or three letters, I'm done. And even there sometimes, "As a Hebron Police Officer with primary responsibility to serve as the School Resource Officer for the Hebron Public Schools." So the motion is moving that in accordance with Town Code Section 100-1. The Hebron Board of Selectmen confirmed the town manager's appointment of Thomas Tapulos as a Hebron Police Officer for a two-year term to run until December 2023. So opening it up for discussion, I see we have, yes, Andy?
So, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to give a quick overview, and then I'll let the resident trooper speak about the process that we went through. We did have conversations with the superintendent of schools, and then I'll let him introduce Mr. Tapulos and give us a background of his career. But thank you again, and I'll turn it over to Reed, Bryce Reed.
Hi, everyone. Right here is Tom Tapulos. He just retired from the Connecticut State Police after about 30 years. He was a resident trooper as well. He taught dare in the schools, and he has a lot of good experience that I listed in the letter of recommendation. The hiring process was, consisted of a lot of components, and Tom came out on top, and we look forward to working with him. Tom wants to say anything?
Well, first of all, thank you for inviting me to the meeting to say a few words. I can't tell you how excited I am to think that I have an opportunity to continue my law enforcement career in a town that I'm invested in, a town that I call home, a town where my kids go to school, one in high school, one in the middle school, one in elementary school, a town that I coached in, and a town that I take a lot of pride in. You know, I believe that the personality that I have, that the values that I stick to, the qualities and skills that I obtained throughout my close to 30-year career with the state police are a good fit for the town. I was a resident state trooper. I taught the dare program for over 10 years. I was a detective with the state police. So I believe it is a good fit, meeting with the superintendents and the principals, and you know, talking about the goals set forth. I'm very excited, very excited to work and look forward to working with the administration, the teachers, the students, the community to ensure a safe and positive school environment, both inside the school and outside the school. I also look forward to working with Trooper Reed for dealing with concerns that our residents have in town and coming up with solutions to those problems that they have. Very excited, even after 30 years, I'm excited to have this opportunity to.
Great. Does anybody on the board have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, I don't have any questions, but I certainly do have a comment. Tom, I don't know if you recognize me in this little thing, but I'm your neighbor, Gail Richmond.
I do, Gail.
Okay, so I very much am supportive of it. Having known him and his wife for, I don't know how many years, seeing as his wife grew up here with my kids, I very much support him. He's a person of good character.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, go ahead, Peter. You go first, Pete.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Mark. I'm just curious. Well, first of all, thank you very much. I mean, getting people like we have stepping up and being willing to serve our community and the role that you have is very much appreciated. I'm just curious, you know, what do you see, and I guess, Mark, you might be able to comment too, but what do you see as some of the challenges in today's school environment that might have been sort of an evolution as you look back, maybe as your child, your oldest child was in elementary school versus today, some of the challenges that you see, and how would you think that we as a community need to be thinking about those going forward?
Well, you just don't have to, you can look at the news and just saw what Michigan went through at a high school. It is absolutely terrifying for parents and educators to think that something like that could happen. As I was picking up my son at basketball practice just yesterday, I was looking at the high school, and you know, we're not, it could happen in any community. So the involvement with the students inside and outside the classroom is vital. You know, you don't know what goes on in people's homes or goes on, you know, mental health is a huge, is a huge thing that we have to deal with on that. So it's the involvement, not just in the schools or outside the schools, to see how the kids are doing, and I know our school district does a great job with not only the teachers, but the counselors to do that. There's no, you know, you never know what could happen at any time or anywhere, but it's putting together policy and procedures and lockdown facilities that will, that will help us out in the long run. But involvement, knowing that the kids, that you're there for the kids to help them out in any way, your involvement with the kids, again, it's age appropriate, from kids from pre-K to sixth grade compared to a junior or senior, you know, their issues may be different on that and how you deal with that. And I believe the personality that I have and the qualities are a good match to help out, because there's so many resources out there to help families, and some people don't know that they're out there, so.
Thank you.
Mark?
Oh, my turn, Dan. Great. Hey, so I've known Tom for probably 15, 16 years. When I retired from Hartford and first came here, I think Tom came up and introduced himself and welcomed me. So now I'm welcoming you to the Hebron Police Force, Tom. I'm glad to have you. I just wanted to make a general comment. In the past couple of years, we've made great strides to modernize our police department, get better training, better equipment, and he's been instrumental in that. We really started making strides when Darryl came, the trooper who just left that Bryce replaced. He's a sergeant now, sort of in Tetro, and Bryce has just jumped right in there and followed through, bringing us into the 21st century, and we're better able to meet the needs of the people. We've become a team. Not to say that, you know, well, I guess I do have to say this, since I've been here 16 years, we have come a long way in 15 or 16 years to really be a department and police officers who are in tune with what's going on, and we're professional, we're trained, we have the right equipment, and it just keeps getting better. So Tom is just another person that will bring this to a better place. We certainly have all kinds of experience. I have 40 years, Tom has 30, Tom Reagan has 23 or four, Ricky has 26, the new guy coming, between all of us, we have 150-plus years of experience. So if we goof something up, it's not because of a lack of experience. And Bryce, although he doesn't have, he probably hasn't even been alive as long as I've been a police officer or a Tom, Bryce is phenomenal. Bryce is a hard worker. We really feel like we're a team with Bryce, and we're all working together for Hebron. So I'm excited, Tom, I'm excited for the police department, and I know we had a discussion about liaisons. Maybe we should have a liaison with the police department and the Board of Selectmen to keep you guys informed about what's going on and what needs to be done. Does that mean that's a good idea, Andy, or no? Or you're the liaison?
That would be me.
Speaking of experience, I just, just one thing, Bryce, I was driving my youngest child off the high school, and she noticed that you were doing traffic, and she did say, "He's young, Dad." I get that a lot. She's used to looking at the old man, I guess, but I'm like, no, he's qualified, but she gets.
Peter, was that directed at me? She's used to seeing an older guy out there?
Say, "Good luck," and she said, "Good-looking comment."
Gotcha. Andy, not too far to get you to. Thank you for all the support you've given Bryce, the police department, and bring it, really, we've made tremendous strides in the past two to four years. It's, we're starting to be the real deal now. So thank you.
All done.
Perfect. Thank you, by the way. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, may I, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm sorry, can I just jump in really quickly? I just wanted to say thank you for stepping forward. I think this is an important goal, and I just want to point out that you made a point about mental health that I think is important and salient, and I think it's something we need to talk about. I think student mental health has been an issue even before the pandemic, and I certainly think the pandemic has exacerbated mental health for a lot of students. I come from a higher education background, and even in our seniors and our young adults, it's pretty clear that the lingering impact of the pandemic has had, has had an effect on their mental health. So I'm really pleased to hear you say that that's a focus of yours. So thank you very much for that.
I just was gonna ask myself, Dan Larson, we've always had a great working relationship with our resident trooper in AHM. Is that going to expand now to have both the resource officers from, and maybe you've already done this, Mark, I don't know, from the high school, but from the elementary school also with AHM? You know, we have the police review board, things like that. So is that something that is going to get expanded maybe, or don't know yet?
Nope.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, so Andy Tierney, Tom Adger, that's something we could definitely look at. We'll work with AHM once Tom's gets settled in. The other Tom that was at the elementary schools is going to move up to RAM, so Mark will be introducing him into that position. So I think, as was stated today, they're all working really well together, so there'll be those conversations in the near future.
Okay, perfect. Okay, well, hearing the motion, all in favor signify by saying aye, going across. Gail? You're on mute.
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you. Our next section, I just want to make sure that I'm...
It'd be the second page of that in your packet. It's the appointment of the sub registers of vital statistics.
Okay, okay. Okay, that's what I wanted to verify. Thank you. Welcome aboard, by the way. Okay, this is the memo from Carla Pomplowitz, our town clerk, requesting the Board of Selectmen approval for her appointment of sub registrars. I'm assuming everybody read what that's all about. Yes, no? Do we, Andy, did you want to do just a quick synopsis of what that is for the audience?
Well, the memo speaks for itself, but the town has to have certain funeral homes available on the off-hours in order to cases of untimely death or a death in the town, and the town clerks aren't readily available, town hall's not open. So this is a common practice that we go through. The motion's there, the town clerk appoints the following sub registry voter statistics to term to run through January 5th. So it's pretty much to have on-call people in case we have an unfortunate situation with a death and we're not available.
Okay, so the motion is moved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the town clerk's appointment of the following as sub registrars of vital statistics for a term to run from January 5th, 2022, to January 7th, 2026, and that would be the Aura McCarthy Funeral Home, and that's Mrs. Patricia McCarthy, the Manchester Funeral Home, and that's Mr. Glenn Blumenstein, Potter Funeral Home, Mr. Christopher Gromo or Gromco, the Mollaren Funeral Home, and that's Mr. Thomas Mollaren. So any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor, going across. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
And Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you. Our next is a Board of Assessment Appeals appointment, and this is, we received correspondence from David Rose expressing his interest in being appointed to the Board of Assessment Appeals, and the motion is moved that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint David Rose to the Board of Assessment Appeals for a term to run until November 21st, 2023.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Rose, I believe, is with us here on this meeting tonight.
Perfect.
That's correct.
Did you want to say anything, sir?
Certainly, I've been a resident in town now for 20 years. I think I've passed the newcomer stage, and it's time to maybe step up and do a little bit of public service. This seems a good place to start.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any of the board members have any questions, comments?
I have a comment. I think I just want to say that David's terrific. I think that he's, you know, incredibly committed to this community, and personally, I'm thrilled that he's stepped forward to serve. So thank you for coming forward, David.
And I copy that same remark. Welcome, David. So, hearing the motion, move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint David Rose to the Board of Assessment Appeals for a term to run until November 21st, 2023. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Teale, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Welcome aboard, sir.
Thank you much, indeed.
What'll happen is you will be getting a letter, and then you'll be going to the town clerk to get sworn in. So you'll be getting a letter, what, Andy, a few days?
Yeah, we'll get it out probably tomorrow if everything's all right.
Okay.
Thank you much.
If not, early next week.
Okay, thank you. Our next section is a town manager's report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a short week last week, and I was at CCM convention two days this week, but it doesn't mean that we still weren't busy. So the majority of the two weeks, we did interviews. We hired a new van driver for the senior center, so he's gonna start on Monday, which we were desperately in need of. We also did interviews and hired three new people for the Public Works Department, which was, we were in desperate need of, and God, it hasn't snowed, so we're out busy training. As I stated, I was at the CC convention, CCM convention, I apologize, Tuesday and Wednesday. It was nice to be, you know, back and see constituents, people that run other towns, a lot of new faces, a lot of changes in local elections. So we've got some new people that we're going to be dealing with on Tatum Health, Portland, town of East Tatum. So I'm still the chairman of that, so we were, you know, getting acquainted, so that was, it was well worth the time and attendance. We're busy working on the audit. We should have, hopefully, a final draft the second week of January. That's going as expected. Working with the bill committee on the library, and I'll get to that in a minute, but there's been a little bit of change now that we received a grant, but that's okay. It's a good change. As far as the affordable housing, they're gonna be sending out a survey next week to the residents, that committee, the committee, I know Dan asked the question, but for everybody to understand who's on that committee, it consists of Florence O'Sullivan, Lilian Rhodes, Sharon Gerard, our seniors director, Pat Gallagher, our new planner, and then Glenn Chadler, that's our consultant that we hired. So they'll be working that and coming up with updates, but the most recent one I got is next week, they should be finalizing the survey and sending that out. So that's moving forward, and that's something that's mandated by state statute. We're gonna have the tree lighting, and that will be this Saturday from 3:00 to 5:00 at the Old Town Hall. So that's always a good event. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate with us. So in this, also under correspondence, I'm very excited to announce, and I've already sent it out there, and I won't steal too much of Gail Richmond's thunder, but from the Connecticut State Library, we received a grant for the library construction, excuse me, for $232,666. So that's huge. That's gonna help us out on that project a lot. Gail was instrumental in getting myself motivated to get the staff to submit for that grant, and it bared fruit. So we're in a better place because of that. So thanks to the efforts of Selectment Richmond, and I think she deserves kudos for that. That's something that we weren't sure we were gonna get.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you, Gail, for pushing it.
And then, Mr. Chairman, I hope this is the appropriate place to bring this up. I didn't feel that this needed to be added to the agenda, but it most certainly can at another time, or if the board feels it appropriate. But I put in an explanation for the revow from the assessor. There was a lot of chatter on social media about revow and possible taxes going up. So we're gonna post this. I'm also gonna send this to the Board of Finance. This is in the agenda packet, but we'll get it up on the webpage. Having your values of your house or your property go up is a good thing, and the town with the Board of Selectmen and town manager and the Board of Finance, this is something that's mandated every five years. What we will be doing is we will be adjusting the mill rate accordingly. You know, we need so much money and revenue to supply the budget along with other grants and things of that nature, but we'll do our best to try to keep taxes where they are. This, by no means, the market was a hot market. That's what drove the percentage up. There's no doubt about it. This explains there's a appeal process, and there's a small window. It's unfortunate. I don't have any control over that, nor does the Board of Selectmen. That's, you know, the window that they have. So we're trying to get this information out there and try to inform the people as best we can on how to calculate their new assessment. We've been fielding a lot of calls downstairs, which would be the assessor's office. So it is what it is, but I went through mine last year, and then my property went up, so that's a good thing. Hopefully, it's worth more when I sell it, but it's something that we had to do. So hopefully, people will get some information and educate themselves with this, and better understand what the process is. So I'll open it up.
Thank you. So many people do not understand that this is just one part of the process. You know, they see the houses going up, and they think that their taxes are gonna go up accordingly, but it is just one of the three pieces that actually forms the end, the end of the tax bill session. So I'm glad you explained it a little bit. You know, at this point, people, people should not get nervous. This is just one part of that puzzle. You know, so I thank you for explaining it. Anybody have any questions they want to ask on that?
Mr. Chairman?
Peter, please.
So Andy, so I'm assuming these calls that come in right away are simply a concern about that correlating to an increase in taxes, or is, and with that said, do, once it's explained, do some of those initial... um, do some of those initial calls then not turn into appeals? Do you have any feel for that?
Absolutely, and my comments are coming from the assessor or the conversation I had with her. Uh, she does a great job of explaining, and I think this letter nails it for some people. I think it's a sticker shot, when you open up that, that, uh, you get it in the mail and you open that up, you're like, oh no, you know, how much more am I gonna have to pay? I didn't budget for this, I didn't, I don't have this escrow. Um, so she, I'm gonna say ninety-nine percent of the explanations to the people when they come in have a much better understanding after talking to her and go away with a sense of they're not gonna get gouged or they understand the process and they understand she helps them how to calculate what the new assessment is gonna be and the amount of money that they're gonna have to, or the increase that they'd be looking at. But there also is, um, some other questions where people need to go in and sit down and find out from the revow company exactly why they're not in a certain bracket or i- if they had something done to their house or, or, or something changed, that, that, that would definitely be something that would be, um, needed to come sit down and appeal. So, so for the most part, the, the quick phone calls are the concerns. It's explaining the process and, and how to really understand the difference between last year and this year, but we, we haven't set a middle rate and, and that's explained too. So, well, you know, revenue's revenue, we need so much to, you know, run the town, but at the same time, when we do a revow, we'll, we'll, we'll adjust that accordingly. So a lot of people are waiting to see what that's gonna be, I don't blame them. Um, but at the same time, with Deb explaining the process and getting this kind of information out, uh, it's quieted down quite a bit on social media and the calls and the people coming in are, are starting to slow down as well.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, uh, moving on, our next item will be our old business. Uh, and really, the only thing we need to, to discuss would be the Boards and Commissions Committee vacancies. And I, I love this, this, uh, um, write-up that, you know, goes with each of these sections. So I think it will help people to understand just what would be, uh, required of them if they were interested in this. Uh, Tiffany, did you wanna say anything or?
No, just to echo what you just said, I think this is very helpful. Um, I do, did receive a lot of questions, um, at my recent Town Committee meeting about the time commitment and when, um, these boards and commissions meet. So I'm pretty confident bringing this information back, that I'll be able to drum up, um, some volunteers, the people who'd like to serve, so this is very helpful. Um, thank you, Andy, and your team for pulling this together.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Of course, please.
Thank you. Tiffany, thank you for that, but I can't take any credit for that. You guys asked for that at the last meeting. Donna Lanza hit the ground running, it wasn't more than the next day and ninety percent of this was put together, so the kudos go to her. Um, and I'm not sure if Dory helped with that or not, but Donna spearheaded that and, uh, next thing you know, it was on my desk, so I, I can't take credit for that. She's a wonderful person to have, uh, and an asset to the town.
Thank you, Donna. I echo that and thank you for pulling this together. I will be using it to try to hopefully recruit some volunteers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. And I'm actually gonna keep that off to the side. Our next section being our, uh, is there any other old business? Hearing none, uh, our new business, we have a number of things. Uh, did you wanna talk about the, uh, con- the awarding of the contract?
Yeah, why don't I, I jump in, I'll just read this quick, and we have our planner with us, Pat Gallagher, who's here to answer some questions or give his overview, but, uh, the Economic Development Commission's been working on this for some time, uh, methodically, and I think they are happy with, uh, their conclusion and what you're gonna see brought forth in front of you tonight. So this is to award a contract for the Economic Development Branding and Marketing Services Consultant. Um, we had to break this into two different, uh, bids because it crosses a fiscal year, we can't, we're not a crystal ball, we can't predict whether the budget of that money's gonna pass for that item, so that's why it looks the way it does. But attaches a memo from Patrick Gallagher, Director of Planning and Development, recommending the Selectment Award Phase One of the Branding and Marketing Study Project to FHI Studio. And with that, there's a proposed motion, but Patrick's here to jump in at any time.
Okay, well, what I'll do is I'll read the motion and then I'll ask Patrick to speak on it and then we can get into questions. Uh, so the move that the Hebron Board of Selectment Award Phase One of the Branding and Marketing Study Project to FHI Studio of Hartford, Connecticut in the amount of twenty-two thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. And Patrick, did you want to, uh, expound on this a little bit?
Sure, thank you, Dan. I'm Pat Gallagher, Town Planner. Um, thanks for the opportunity to present tonight. Uh, as Andy had mentioned, this has been a project that EDC has been working on for quite some time. This was identified as really a priority of theirs last year and was accounted for in the budget for this fiscal year. And it's really focused on, um, branding and marketing, which will be used to recruit new businesses to Hebron. In their discussions, they really wanted to emphasize bringing new development to town and identified this study as really the necessary first step. And as Andy had mentioned, um, the scope and feet proposal that we received from FHI Studio um, spans almost a full year and, um, that requires us to break it up into two phases. And so, uh, the scope and feet proposal in your packet is broken up into those two phases, just so you could see um, the whole as well as which components would be, um, uh, in that initial contract if approved tonight. And, um, and then we would go back, uh, hopefully in the springtime, once the budget is known, and, uh, come back with a Phase Two proposal for your consideration as well.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Uh, Gail? I think that was an aye, reading her lips.
That was an aye, yes.
Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, I.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, I.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, I.
And myself, Dan Larson, I. Thank you. Our next thing is the Pollinator Pathway Resolution. Uh,
Yes, if I may, Mr. Chairman. So this has been brought to us by a resident, uh, the Green Garden Gang. Uh, Michelle, uh, has been working to try to, um, get this approved, so I've been working with her. Uh, she did go in front of the Green Committee, uh, she is a member, presently a member, or was. Um, and she brought it to them and they, uh, had agreed that Pollinator Pathway Resolution could benefit the town of Hebron. Um, I took it upon myself as the Town Manager and talking to some of the department heads and scaled it back a little bit to its original content that is listed on the, their, their website, uh, the, the actual one they wanted to go on. Echo, the other one I felt was a little too restrictive and we really weren't gonna be able to enforce that. So this is the scaled-down version, it's, it's what, uh, is posted up on, on the actual website for the Connecticut Pollinator Pathways. Um, so I'm comfortable bringing this form of a resolution to the Selectment for approval, and I think it'll benefit the town and show good faith to them that we are trying to work with them.
Okay. I will. Does anyone wanna read this? If not, I'll read it. I guess I'll read it. Whereas pollinators are in decline due to the destruction and fragmentation of habitat from development, a lack of native plants due to an increase in invasive species, inappropriate and excessive use of pesticides, and a lawn culture that promotes turf grass, model culture which offers no benefits to the pollinators and other wildlife. Whereas pollinator species such as bees, birds, butterflies, and other pollinating insects are vital to maintaining healthy and diverse ecosystems. Whereas native plants support pollinators and all wildlife in town name, uh, and beyond by providing food and shelter. They also help prevent erosion, keep our waterways clean, restore soil health, and improve the air we breathe. Whereas pollination is responsible for most of the food we eat. Whereas five native bee species are threatened, endangered, or of special concern in Connecticut, and a downward trend is seen in species diversity of bees, butterflies, birds, and many other animals. Whereas the town of Hebron is cognizant of the need for safe and healthy landscapes for its residents and habitat for important pollinators. And whereas recent scientific research supports the benefits of restoring and reconnecting isolated patches of habitat, now therefore be it resolved, the town of Hebron, Connecticut does hereby recognize and support the tenants of the Pollinator Pathway Northeast, which are to encourage all residents to, one, reduce lawn size, provide predominantly native and pollinator-supporting plants, and assure a sequence of blooms from early spring through fall. Uh, see www.pollinator-pathway.org for helpful lists. Two, protect and enrich soil by using organic yard care practices and avoiding application of synthetic fertilizers, pesticides, herbicides, and insecticides, and treated mulch, and leave some areas of bare ground for ground nesting bees. Three, follow best practices for garden cleanup. Clean up in the spring, allow plant heads to remain through winter to provide food for, uh, wildlife. Keep plant stalks standing and leave snags of dead wood for native bees to nest. Uh, and we have number leaves, no, leave the leaves on flower beds through fall and winter to provide habitat, soil nourishment, and protection for overwatering or overwintering, excuse me, pollinators. And four, have a water feature, uh, i.e. a bird bath, fountain, or natural water source, or a natural water source. So that is the resolution. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Any discussion?
I, I did, Mr. Chairman, I, I have, just, I'm curious if I may, Peter Casper. So what, this is, i- it's obviously a very well-thought-out and, and logical approach, but to the average homeowner, it would seem overly daunting. We're talking about, so what, what are we intending to do here to change the behavior of our homeowners? Are we, are we following all those practices with our town-owned land now? I mean, I, I'm just trying to understand, I mean, it all makes sense to me and I'm supportive of it, it's just, it seems relatively complex and daunting compared to how the average homeowner maintains their property now. So what are our expectations here to communicate and support this beyond just simply stating that it's a good idea?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So it, the way I scaled it back was just pretty much for your concerns. This is subject, subjective or suggestive. Um, without us enforcing it, we're saying to please consider this, the town's considering this, we have pollinators. Uh, we're gonna plant some, some areas for her, for, uh, to help with the pollinators and some other town properties. We're gonna have, uh, some more no-mo areas, uh, maybe not right at Town Hall. I finally got Michelle to move off of Town Hall, took a little doing, but I assured her we have plenty of other areas we could do this to be successful. So she came around, but, uh, and the same thing with this, she, her heart is in the great place and she just wants to do great work. And, and I don't wanna discourage her in any way, but this, at this point, is saying that the Board of Selectment agree to be suggestive and wherever you can, whether it be one or any of these suggestions, please try, and if everybody did at least one or tried, it would be a huge help. So we're trying to say we agree with the philosophy and, uh, we're supporting it without being an enforcement.
Okay, thank you, that, that helps, I appreciate it, because it's, when you said scaled back, I was kinda curious what the non-scaled-back version was.
I had sent that out, I think, to the Board a couple, um, meetings prior, I, I apologize, Tiffany, you probably didn't get the original. And I didn't, I didn't supply it because I had met with Michelle and had talked to the Green Committee and I, I, I hope you guys don't mind. I, I knew that that was something that probably wouldn't fly, and I, I like to get things in front of you that I know you could get behind the support, but the way it was written, I had our own department head saying, just what you said, Peter, we can't, we can't comply with that ourselves, so how can we somewhat, I don't wanna use the word dictate, but strongly recommend to the residents if we're not gonna be able to comply with that ourselves as department head, so I got Michelle to understand that that's the rationale behind the Board of Selectment. They don't like to put resolutions or ordinances in place that aren't enforceable.
Right, it's awareness, to me, it's awareness is the main objective here, more so than for the average citizen who's clearly not at the same level as the other folks that are more engaged in this, in this issue, but to me, it's, I'm listening to the, the element associated with awareness, which is the first step. But the idea then of trying to comply with all those, it does, even in this current version, seems a little bit overwhelming, so as long as our focus is awareness, I think that's a great first step. Thank you.
I was gonna say, people that have larger properties, it would probably be easier for them to adhere to a lot of this. I know I'm fortunate enough to have, you know, a fairly large piece of property, I've got swamp lands. You know, and I, I really have done everything in my power to try to protect, I've had vernal pools in the spring. Um, I've tried to do brush piles, other things for wildlife habitat to help to encourage and, and give them a place for cover. Um, you know, one of the things that, you know, people with big manicured lawns, the only thing that really do any, what, anything good in there are ticks. Outside of that, it, it's, it's not an environment that benefits any type of, of wildlife species. Um, you know, they need cover, they need food, they need, uh, you know, water, so you know, if, if people can just spend a little bit of time, uh, there's a lot of native-type plants that can be planted. The other issue, and we've heard it from Rich Colarco, you know, time after time after time, year after year, uh, the, the, the prominence of, of so many different invasive species that are out there. Um, I would love to see a program, I think there's a lot of invasive species that are out there that people have become so familiar with that they don't even realize that they shouldn't be. Um, you know, and even myself, I, I can't tell you all the different invasive species that are out there because they've been around since we've been around. Um, but that doesn't mean that they are any less potentially destructive to the environment. Uh, you know, so a lot of education. Um, and this basically is saying that, you know, we understand, we agree there needs to be education. Uh, and it'd be great to see people getting on board. Uh, part of their charge is going to be to do that education. You know, to educate not only us, but the rest of, of our citizens. Anybody else? So, hearing the resolution, all in favor of, I signify by saying aye. Uh, Gail?
Gail Wismann, I.
Because Tiffany has moved, Tiffany?
Uh, Tiffany Tealy, I.
In case you wonder, yeah, I just kinda like go right around the block, you don't miss somebody.
Peter. Peter Casper.
Mark?
Mark Rivera, I.
And myself, Dan Larson, I. Thank you. Our next is the Wall Street Sidewalk Update.
Yes, there's nothing in the packet, so I apologize at the time we sent it out, but I do have some positive information. Tiffany asked that this be added to the agenda, which is more than appropriate. Um, so we were working with the state archaeologists out there right along the edge of where the wall was gonna go on Wall Street, an area that's prominent, and they wanted to protect that. So we had gone back to the town engineer, which is Tom Fenton, and we and we worked with the state archaeologist and came up with a, a little bit of an alternative plan that would still allow us to get the sidewalk in place. Since that time, and before we sent this out, uh, I'm sorry, after we sent this out, the packet, that is, the um, shippo had not received a letter from the state archaeologist saying they agreed with the change in the blueprint. Since that uh time, they now have received a letter from the state archaeologist. So I've been told as soon as next week, we should have the green light for that project for the, for the public. We also had gotten the grant to cover, you know, at least most of that cost. So uh, if that in fact is the case, we get the green light, we'll be looking to uh probably, you know, get that out to bid over the winter for a spring uh construction season.
Great.
Very appropriate to have asked for an update on Tiffany, thank you.
Perfect.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, please.
I just want to thank Andy for the update. Um, I was asked pretty frequently about this project on the campaign trail, so I do appreciate it. I think it's an important project. I think it makes our town a little bit more inclusive. I think it opens up avenues for residents to walk to, you know, down Wall Street to get near the center of town. So um, I'm excited by this news, so thank you.
And thank you for asking, yes, it is definitely, uh, it's something that definitely is needed. There's, Wall Street is not a pedestrian-friendly road. And we've had accidents and fatalities on Wall Street. Quite literally, we've had accidents, fatalities in front of, of the Ram going up and down Wall Street, you know. So sidewalks are, are definitely a safety concern. And I, I'm glad you asked, and I'm glad to see this is moving forward. Okay, our next, I believe, is the approval of the debt service fund policy revision. And again, I'll read the motion, then Andy can talk on it, please, and we'll go from there. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen to approve the revised debt service fund policy as recommended and approved by the Hebron Board of Finance and at, at, should be at their November 18th, 2021 meeting. Uh, Andy, did you just wanna briefly discuss this, or?
Absolutely, so the information is in the packet. Um, we have a very active Board of Finance, which I do appreciate. Also, as our labor attorney always says, a lot of this is just cleanup. They, uh, some of it is just rewording, adding or deleting a portion of a sentence or a phrase on, it's listed, it's marked up on what was changed. So this is, in my mind, somewhat housekeeping to make it more accurate in, in the Hebron's world today. And uh, they're, they're more comfortable with it. They wanted to get their uh fingerprints and updates, so I had no problem. Uh, this is also uh been approved by the finance director with no uh issues. So I consider it a formality at this point.
Any questions or discussion? Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the uh revision, signify by saying aye, Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Uh, Tiffany?
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Mark Rubera?
Mark Rubera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, Dan Larson, aye. Thank you. Our next section will be the supplemental appropriation for the police department body in car cameras.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's item 9E. And we're looking for approval or supplemental appropriation for a police department body in car cameras. Attaches and memo uh from resident state trooper Bryce Reed. And I must apologize for him, he was gonna stay on the meeting to answer any questions, but I, I, I'm comfortable with Mark here, but he just got called out just now. And I also apologize, if you saw me on my phone, I was answering the resident trooper. He's reporting to a crash in town, so we had to leave him properly. Uh, so with that being said, uh, there's a resident trooper Bryce Reed regarding the mandated body worn and in car cameras for the Hebron Police Department. The town manager concurs with the resident state trooper's recommendations. Funding was approved in the fiscal year 202021 operating budget, but additional funds are required to complete the purchase. The Board of Finance approved a supplemental appropriation at their November 18th meeting, uh, 2021. The reason we went to the Board of Finance is we changed the charter, and Gail will remember this, because of the time sensitivity, it's whose meeting comes first. You guys still have the final approval, but we want to get their fingerprints on it, so we're keeping them in the loop. But once again, it states itself, this is a mandate uh that came down from the state. And we don't have much choice. Uh, the reason uh we have to add additional funds to it, as you heard earlier in this meeting, uh, we added police. So when police comes more equipped, more cameras, um, things of that nature. So when the budget was initially put together by trooper Greenwood, um, he didn't account for uh more police officers being added to the force.
I'll read the motion, then I have a question. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve the purchase of the body worn and in car cameras from Tellra Pro as recommended by the resident state trooper and town manager. Further that, in accordance with section 905 of the Hebron Town Charter, the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $17,572 to fund such purchase. As we're getting more troopers are on, are we adding any vehicles, or no?
Well, I'm not adding additional vehicles, but we will be replacing aging out vehicles.
Okay.
Uh, but we, when we went into the Ram uh agreement, we purchased a vehicle at that point in time, so that's where we did add one additional. But I think uh what Bryce has in CIP is um for replacement, not adding additional.
Okay. Open it up for other questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye, Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rubera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye, thank you. Our next is the supplemental appropriation for the dump, for the truck body replacement. And I'll read the motion. Move that in accordance with section 905 of the Hebron Town Charter, the Hebron Board of Selectmen approve a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $32,800 to fund the purchase of a truck body replacement for a 2006 dump truck, uh, parentheses, the, truck two, and refer to the Hebron Board of Finance for their approval. Okay, Andy, did you want to discuss, or?
Absolutely, absolutely, Mr. Chairman. And uh, this is where hopefully everybody um agrees with the town manager, former government. So I'll get up on my, uh, my stump and start stomping for this. As you, the people that have worked for me for the last 10 years know, I do not come in front of you for too much, that wasn't budgeted. Uh, this is a different situation. So with the COVID and the state of affairs that we're in, anybody is trying to buy any type of appliances or equipment, the increase has been astronomical. So last year, uh, in the CIP, we approved half the funding for a new plow truck, which is not this truck. So when refreshing our CIP, which we're in the midst of working on right now, it came to our attention that the increase, we budgeted half of the amount of the truck last year, and we were gonna sup- supply the remaining amount this year, which would have been the same amount. In refreshing the quotes for the trucks, the trucks have gone up $45,000. So in light of that, this truck two was gonna come on to the replacement list in the CIP this year. In a conversation with the part, uh, Department of Public Works Director Kevin Kelly, who can't be here with his son, he's, he's uh had a procedure done. I said, Kevin, the likely go to getting that approved with, with that type of increase is just probably, no, not likely. So he and the mechanic came back and said, the real problem with that truck is the engine and the drivetrain are good, but the body shot. We need it for this year. So if we could get a supplemental appropriation for the 32,800, that's a like-for-like, that's the same company that put the same body on this truck when we bought it originally back in 2006. I think that's a great price, and it's a heck of a lot cheaper than trying to buy two trucks with that increase due to COVID. I am a firm believer, if and when this settles down, those prices will come back somewhat down and be a little bit more realistic than that type of spike. If we were to approve this, uh, and once again, this is how the meetings work, as I stated earlier, it's in front of you before the Board of Finance, but you have the approval. But they'll, they'll bring it up at their next meeting, which I believe is on the 9th. But um, if we were to approve this $32,800, this as it states would take that truck and push it out at least five years in the CIP five-year plan. So financially, I'm, I'm asking you to trust the town manager's recommendation here a little, little bit ahead of the CIP process because we're not there yet. But knowing the amount of another brand-new truck, it's not likely we're gonna purchase two. So I think this is a, as Brian O'Connell said when he was on the board, it's time to start thinking outside of the box. I think that's what this is.
I would, uh, Andy, would it be correct in saying also the amount of, of labor, probably not a lot in material, but the amount of labor to try to keep that body pieced together and, and functional would also just run into the untold thousands of dollars at the long run?
That's listed in, in the director's memo. It, it, it quotes how much uh, we'd have, we'd have to repair that body, we'd have to have it fabricated, so it's all spelled out. So at that point in time, it, it, this way here, you'll have a brand-new body, and it'll last, last the town another five years, and we won't have to replace that truck at a cost of $245,000. To me, it's a no-brainer, but I'm not here to try to be a salesman. I'm here to try to, we need that truck for this winter. There's definitely a problem with it. If it doesn't get uh this approved, we're gonna have to spend our repair budget to go in there and try to, you know, get that into some sort of shape that uh we can get it through and get replaced.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please, Gail.
I, I want to agree with um Andy's term, it's a no-brainer. For that amount of money, we don't have to replace something for five years. Uh, that sounds like a win-win situation for us because we know that it's been mild so far, but we will get snow, and we have to get our roads plowed for, for safety, even before you start thinking about your mobility.
Yep, I agree, we definitely have got responsibilities to our, the people of our town to maintain and keep our roads as safe as possible, and that takes equipment. So I, 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 I am in favor of this, but I just wanted to get that, that out. Any other discussion? Peter?
Yeah, I just said something, Andy, obviously your area of expertise and not mine, but so the five years is that, the body isn't the five years. It's then the engine and, and, and transmission would be at their end of their useful life at that point. Is that, I'm a two-minute.
Right, that, that's a great question. What, what that would do is we would revisit the truck in the five years and see in fact if it does need to be replaced. But that will at least guarantee it. We're not coming back to the CIP or putting it on the list for five years if we do this. And that's the recommendation of the mechanic, who we have, a very, very good mechanic down there.
Oh, and just to add another sort of rudimentary question, just because I'm curious. So th- these, these trucks, is it possible to replace the engines? Or is that just, like, say the body is a 10-year body, and now you're at the five-year, would you then look at the engine work differently? Or is that, is that something you've ever done before? Have it had an engine replaced, or is it typically the, now at that point it's 20 years old, and it just needs to be replaced in general?
Well, th- these are great questions, and, and if you've known me, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be blunt. At the amount of these new prices with these new trucks, we're gonna have to start looking at other alternatives. We might have to sub more out. We can't sub it all out. But yeah, we can do anything, we can replace motors, we can replace transmissions, we've done that. But I, I think if, if this is what the new norm's gonna be, then we gotta, we gotta figure out a way to, to cut, cut costs for the, for the taxpayers. That's, I'm awed how much a, a state-of-the-art plow truck costs today. That's, that's just, I, I, I just can't even imagine that.
Yeah, buy a house or buy a plow truck, you know, it's cheaper to buy a house. Okay, thank you for the, uh, the additional information, I appreciate it.
I was gonna say, I think the fire department's also looking at how they can stretch out their fire trucks, because again, it's, it's just huge money, huge money. And, you know, it's not like a building or something that you have equity, and it's, it's something that, you know, you roll it off the showroom floor, and it's already losing value. And this is one of the things that, you know, in past years, we've talked about trying to set up some sort of, of a vehicle replacement fund. Uh, the downside is just never been the money to, to get it instituted. But these are some challenges that are not going away. And I don't know if Andy wants to elaborate on any of that kind of discussion at this point in time, but.
Well, I just, I, I think it's good that I'm out there and working the other people in the other towns. We're not doing anything different than what any other towns do. And every other town owns plow trucks, some of them set out more routes than others and use contractors, and, and we're just gonna have to start weighing those costs against the replacement on the CIP list. Because like I said, I got 35 years into the business, and I never would have thought a plow truck would cost $245,000. I can't even imagine it.
I can remember spending that much money just for a fire truck.
Exactly.
Got a lot more parts, you know. Anyway, any other questions? Comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye, Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Uh, Mark?
Mark Rubera, aye.
Uh, Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye, thank you. Motion carries. Our hmm, next would be our draft agenda. Uh, actually, it'll be added, well, let us jump and do our other new business, because that will affect. So, Gail?
All right, um, I looked at the agenda, the next agenda, there is nothing pressing on there, and it is the holiday season, and everyone has a tremendous number of obligations. So I would like to make a motion that we defer that meeting. And we always know that if an emergency arrived, we could have a special meeting. But look, the way things are right now, I move that we defer the meeting and next meet in January.
Okay, so Gail's made a motion. Do we need a second on that? I'll make the second, that way it's done. So, a discussion?
I enthusiastically approve.
Love it.
Any other discussion?
I enthusiastically support that also.
Okay.
I as well, I have a, an actual retirement party in Plainville that night for a, a longtime colleague of mine, uh, so that would free me up to be able to attend that.
Okay. So, uh, going around the block, Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rubera, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. So then, uh, the draft agenda would be for, and I don't have the paperwork here in front of me, I'm gonna say January.
It's January 6th.
Yep, so our January 6th meeting. So again, if you have anything. So again, if you have anything to add or whatever, please get it into. The office and we'll get that considered. Okay, our next will be our consent agenda. And I'll read the motion. Move the Hebrew Board of Selectmen to approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. And we have two minutes to be approved, one of the November fourth, two thousand twenty one. And the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty one, and then the tax refunds as listed. Does anybody have any corrections or modifications or anything for this? Whether the minutes or what have you?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, please.
I would just like it noted for the record that I'd like to abstain from approving the minutes of November fourth, as I was not seated on the board for that meeting.
Oh, okay, I understand. So then we will break it in into pieces. So I'll make a motion to approve the November fourth, two thousand twenty one regular meeting. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Tiffany?
I'll abstain.
Mark?
Mark Rubera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. The approval of the minutes of the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty one regular meeting. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rubera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. And then the tax refunds as listed. Gail?
Gail Richmond, aye.
Tiffany?
Tiffany Tealy, aye.
Mark?
Mark Rubera, aye.
Peter?
Peter Casper, aye.
And myself, aye. Thank you. Our next would be our. Liaison reports. And I know we had brought up discussion on that. I'm not sure if anybody's really at any place where they want to discuss those things that. They feel need to have liaisons or those things that do not need to have liaisons. Has anybody done any studying or thoughts on that? Or is that something that we should push off and put down as an item to be discussed in January?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think what many of the boards do not need a liaison from the Board of Selectmen attending. Because we, well, you know, after all these years we've been on the board, how many nights a week we have a meeting? I think it can be handled by just having a liaison talk with someone from that board, the chair or someone else. And getting an update on their happenings and we don't have to attend. Certainly, um, a couple of the ones that I am the liaison for, I do attend and I want to attend. But for most of them, no, we don't need to. That wasn't the purpose, as I said at the last meeting. That was not the purpose of the liaison. It was just to keep the communication channels open.
Okay. Now, Andy, yes, please.
Yeah, when I when I took over as the town manager, Jeff Wild was chairman of the board. The concern about the liaison there, there was a lot of stuff going on up at RAM. We weren't privy to, so I was attending a lot more of the RAM meetings before we had a liaison. And that's where I think a lot of it originated. We always had somebody that had to be seated. On the Open Space Land Act, which was Brian O'Connell for the longest time. To point out, we kind of had a little bit of a homework assignment at the last meeting for the Board of Selectmen. And Tiffany gets the golden star because she's the only one that sent in that she would like to be the liaison or the seated person. On that board of commission. So I think it'd be appropriate to push it off, give you guys some time to think about exactly what you feel should or should not have liaisons. But it's been my recollection and recommendation all along that the meetings and the town events that you have to attend as a selectman. Or whatever else you're involved in is is a lot. So to put the demands on people that seat on boards and commissions, whether it be the Board of Ed or the Board of Finance or the Board of Selectmen. That may be a deterrent for people wanting to volunteer for the town in some capacity. Because as you heard Tiffany say earlier, you know, we spelled it out, there are people asking her about time commitments. Because with this technology we have today, it's it's it takes a lot of a lot of time and you've got to be available. So to be a seated elected official is quite a bet to 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 put on another meeting or two. Either a week or a month, that that could be the the backbreaker or the deal breaker.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, please be.
So when we made those changes, was there any sort of or motion or resolution or anything that we have to address? This one part is the first question and because we're undoing something. And then in terms of the practice, we would want to have some form of communication to these boards and commissions to let them know that we're changing our approach. Just so they have a chance to weigh in because there could be an exception where someone has found the benefit to the actual participation. I don't know, but I just, I would at least like to think, have the board think about how we're going to communicate that and do so in advance. So if there is some perspective that we haven't been entered, haven't entertained, it could be brought forward before we make a change in approach.
I'd just like to mention, and correct me if I'm wrong, but every board and commission after a meeting has to file minutes. Correct? Or not?
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
So with that being said. I I understand that it may be a lot of reading. But maybe we should just be forwarded those minutes. One of the things that I know is coming down the pike, there's a new plan of of. Oh, God, what is it?
Plan of. They're working on a plan of conservation and development.
Thank you. I was thinking development, that's not quite right. Conservation and development. And I actually looked at some of the the draft proposals because it involves Hebrew Historic Properties Commission. And they've done a tremendous amount of work. And this was the first that I've actually taken a look at it because it was the first that maybe shame on me, I don't know, that I knew it was even happening. So again, if if minutes were posted. And sent to us. We could peruse them at our our leisure. And if it was something that we needed to be concerned with or thought we needed to be concerned with, whatever, we could then make the appropriate. Contacts, you know, back through the town manager's office. And again, I I I want to stress that everything should be going through the town manager's office. We don't want to be running out to all the individual entities in town. I don't think that's appropriate, but at least voicing our, whether it's concerns or questions or what have you. So maybe that's a an easier way that this could be accomplished. And we may.
We still assign somebody. You're not suggesting that we all peruse the twelve fifteen boards and commission minutes and come up with. I might get a little bit distracted.
I I don't know, but it would, if they got posted, we could peruse them if we so desire.
But the minutes are all posted on there. They have to be posted by F O Y. So anybody could read any of them, but I agree with Peter. I don't want to read all of them. I want to rely on somebody assigned to that board or commission. That speaks with someone from that commission and summarizes it and brings it to a meeting or files a report for us to get in our packet. We need to keep up. We're responsible. We're the ultimate responsible board. So we are responsible for knowing what goes on in those other places. But boy, I don't want to attend and I don't want to read it all.
Andy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also agree with Selectman Casper that. Communication would have to be sent out involving these boards and commissions to make sure we don't offend or step on anybody's toes and tell them. We're thinking about possibly getting rid of or suspending some of the liaisons. But that has to be communicated in a professional manner where we don't slight anybody or think that one board of commission is more important than the other.
We would, I don't think we would tell them that we want to suspend or we're not going to have one. We say we're redefining the concept due to time constraints. I've got, and and I know this is happening around the state, as you know, Andy, I my being president of a statewide group. I go to many towns or speak with people from many towns. And they're all having the problem of volunteers and they're all having the problem of one out volunteers that are just burning, burning out. So.
So Andy, would you suggest, I'm sorry.
That's right, Peter.
So would you suggest, because we don't have a meeting on the sixteenth and we're looking to make some decisions on the sixth, would would that note come from your office then? That or how would you suggest it?
I I've got, it sounds like I got a volunteer in Selectman Richmond that what she wants to post, I'll let her submit a draft. With my capable staff, I'm sure we can come up to something of your liking. It would be a draft form until you guys approve it before anything got sent out to edit. So we could start there. That would be my suggestion.
Thank you, Gail.
Yeah, I just, I think I've just been voluntold instead of volunteered, to use Kathy Williams' term. And I think some some of these are important, Andy, for the like the W P C A. That you really need to keep us up to date on all the time.
Yeah, no, no argument there. What I do is with the W P C administrator, who like I said, can't be here tonight. But normally I get weekly updates and I don't even wait for the Board of Selectmen's meeting. I send those out to you guys via email. As they come in.
Okay. So I guess we got some thought processes to do and we have a month to do it. So, great. So does anybody have a liaison reports tonight?
I do. See, we're all doing our jobs here. Want me to start, Dan?
Yes, please. Yeah.
All right. The Hebrew Board of Ed, they, one of the students, Reagan Stanford, has been recognized for her logo creation for the program called Choose Love. And they are very happy to have received from the Hebrew Education Foundation, twenty one thousand three hundred and fifty dollars for maker spaces. And at Hebron El and Gilliard Hill School. The senior center commission on aging. Right now, they're very busy with Medicare, open enrollment, and the winter heating assistance and applications. Due to the fact that the state's rate of COVID has been increasing. On Thursday, December twenty third, the holiday event will be grab and go. And the Douglas Library, this Saturday, I'll be up at the Douglas Library for the. How happy holiday event from three to five. And I volunteer to go into the community room and work with children's crafts. But this will be a big event. There will be tree lighting, carolers, and hot cocoa will be served. And of course, Santa and Mrs. Claus will come on the sled. And if anyone wants to attend a movie on Friday, tomorrow, Free Guy will be shown. And that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, perfect. Mark?
Hey, Gail, good job on getting the grant for the library.
Oh, thank you.
And whoever else helped with that, that's huge.
With that, the cost of of that project. Yeah, we need another one like that.
I'm sure you'll be creative. You might find something, Gail, knowing you. That's that's unbelievable. Thank you. COVID hasn't gone away yet. We're still having COVID cases at RAM among students and teachers. To clarify a policy, some teachers opted not to be vaccinated. And if you're not vaccinated, you have to get tested weekly and provide that information to the administration. If you don't don't do that, you can't come into the building and that applies to everybody. So some teachers who weren't vaccinated tested positive and they're quarantined. They've been following the policy and getting tested weekly. That's how it was revealed to everybody. So that's what's going on over there and. Despite what people think, people who have been vaccinated are getting COVID. Albeit the symptoms are less. I got my booster today and I had an interesting discussion with the with the person who gave me the shot. Saying that the the numbers are showing five to seven percent of people vaccinated are getting COVID. And so it it is still a danger out there. So it's still going on at RAM and I just want you guys to know that. Dan, to bring up one last thing that you mentioned earlier, the J R B, the juvenile review board. The courts have really slowed down since COVID. So J R B, the number of referrals has skyrocketed. That's the alternative program to actually being arrested and going to juvenile. Although they 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 don't call it an arrest anymore. It's called a referral. That's a euphemism, really. So that 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 really has skyrocketed and back to the mental health thing that Tiffany mentioned, I think Peter, much of you said it. Well, most of the kids that are making bad decisions, it's it's directly related to mental health issues. So everybody's battling that. A H M has stepped up the plate. We need more help with J R B, especially like we talked about last meeting that Frank Carina left. So you're correct in saying that with all the school resource officers and everybody else pitching in, Dan. We we need help all across the board there. So that's that's I that completes what I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Peter?
Board of Finance meets next week and I do not have anything on the Parks and Rec Commission to report. Thank you.
Okay, I'm assuming Tiffany, you don't have anything.
I just got appointed tonight, so. I'll have a report for you in January.
We've got an hour to get up, get ready.
Hebrew Historic Properties canceled their meeting the other night, so they did not meet. The fire department, they, the auxiliary, you know, the group that, you know, as I say, the auxiliary started, I forgot, twenty five years ago, I think it was. Served over eighty dinners. So that was a fantastic thing. What they did was they actually prepared the meals. I ended up having to do electrical, so I wasn't able to assist. But at any rate, and then they had auxiliary members literally drive it around and deliver them to the seniors throughout town. So as I say, they did over eighty dinners. So another incredibly great event. And the seniors love it and, you know, they like to have people visit them, you know, it's. Fire department, if you've noticed. Trucks and I guess the big guy or whatever are cruising around a little bit, hitting the different neighborhoods. In fact, they went by here and they're all blowing the horns and everything. And I almost didn't sign on in time because I was wondering what was going on. And my wife says, oh, the fire department just driving by. So it's like, oh, okay. So that's happening. I don't know if anybody, I have not yet done the Christmas light tour at the Lions Club. I'm hoping to get up there this weekend. You know, it it sounds like it's quite a display that they did. So I don't know if anybody's been through that yet. But I'm hoping for this weekend. Andy, did you have anything?
You know, I just was gonna say something and I lost my, oh, land acquisition. Tiffany, hope I'm not stepping on any toes, but there was a nice write up. Tiffany, hope I'm not stepping on any toes, but there was a nice write-up in the River East this week about the donation from Mr. Yaps.
Yeah.
The property down there. And I'm hoping to meet with the executor the end of this month to have that conveyed over to the town. I've already met with the person. Um, and we've, you know, met with the probate people just for initial going to unfold. So we're going to move forward with that. But I think, I think Sloan did a good job with that story and I think that word got out there to the Hebron community. The gentleman, if you've ever, if you ever had the pleasure to meet him, was, was quite a guy. And he loved nature and he loved his wife and he built that home himself. And he lived there until he died. And it's just an amazing story. And he loved the community so much and he loves nature that he had started conversations earlier on with Brian O'Connell, who was a selectman at the time and in charge of the Open Space Land Act. And it's, it's just, it's just a wonderful story. And it's going to be preserved for everybody to enjoy. I just, I, it's, when you meet people like this in the world that we're in today, it's amazing that, how he conducted himself. He did leave some money to the School of Music at Willimantic. But all the rest of the stuff, the house and the property goes to the town Hebron. And that's just, that's just an amazing gift to everybody in, in the community to enjoy. For here on, Mister Chairman?
Yes, Peter, please.
Is, is there anything we can do in terms of a, a plaque of some sort of permanent recognition on the property? Is that something that's even appropriate? I just think that when I hear, when I read the article and I hear you speak, it, it is the type of memory we want to have more over the years in terms of that type of generosity. And, and I, I don't know if it would be out of scope, but I just was wondering if that's something that could be talked about.
I, I, I don't see a reason why we could not authorize a plaque to be put up either at the beginning of the property or at some point, you know, at the, at the edge of the property stating a little bit about it and how it became part of Hebron, or, you know, part of Hebron's resources.
And I don't know if it's appropriate, but you know, obviously it would be, it would be nice to have his legacy endorsed somehow. Andy, you have a comment on that? And maybe this has come up before.
I, I, I work at the pleasure of the board. I think that is more than appropriate. And I think the Open Space Land Act Committee would have no problem even funding something like that due to the, the wonderful gift that the town has received. I think that, that, that's nothing more than appropriate to do something like that.
Look at you, Tiffany. Let's go. Let's do, get this done. Come on.
Thank you for my report tonight, Andy.
I don't know, I just think we shouldn't lose sight of, again, it's, it's when you run across somebody like that, it, it, to have a reminder. And just thinking of some of the things that the scouts have done uh, over the years to, to, to enhance a property or provide signage or history or something like that. It's just something that if we can at least not lose sight of, I think would be nice.
Andy, you have more good news to report? Want, want me to do it for you?
Go right ahead.
Okay. Hey, they completed the paving behind the new Flower Girl Restaurant. So all the, um, all the parking lots connect now and it comes out behind the library. It's phenomenal back there. I've been waiting years for that. I don't know if anybody noticed that today, but they finished this afternoon. So good, good getting that done, Andy, before the winter.
Mark, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take those kudos and I'm gonna tell you why. To, to get that project done, the, um, the partnership between the private-public parking agreement through the Board of Selectment, planning and zoning, getting that drawn up, laid out, engineered, and getting it paved within two months' time is, is, is a record that has been broken. That, that was, things just don't move that fast in municipal life. And that is to go to show how well this Board of Selectment and planning and zoning along with the town manager's office are working with our downtown businesses to try to help them do something great, get that center going. Public Works jumped up, jumped in, Planner jumped in, Planning and zoning did the approvals. Michael Lurie at the time worked with Tom Fettin, the engineer, to get the easel drawn up and the drainage, which you guys approved. So I, I don't want to speak for the, you know, the town elves, but I, I know they're ecstatic with the cooperation that, it's not me, it's you, the board, allow me to do and, and the approvals that you guys have given me to move forward on that project. So Mark, you are right. I, I was sweating that out so bad. They were so worried that we weren't going to get that paved. And the window, if we didn't get it paved this week, the window was closed.
What's the timeline for the Flower Girls opening? Is that, is there any, anything specific on that? I know.
I consider it a bad game. The, the birdie's back in their court because I did everything I was supposed to do. So now it's up to them to finish up. But what I've heard is she's starting to move equipment inside. He still has to do siding and stuff like that. But the inside area where, where she is, she at least can move some of her equipment in there. Not that she's in there operating yet, but the heat's on him now, not so much the town. We, we fulfilled our obligations in record time.
Thank you. I'd just like to say also, you know, it's, it's again, and I'm assuming that a lot of it goes along with the charrettes that we had done.
Oh, gosh.
I'm not even sure how many years ago now, to be honest. But, you know, these are, these are projects that were discussed, thought about years ago. And we're actually seeing this coming to fruition. And it's a nice little, it, it's going to be a great little commercial area back there. Of, you know, nice looking buildings and now it, it's just very thoughtfully set up and laid out. And I think it's a benefit to, to Hebron. Our town manager, our past town planner, you know, these are a lot of, of, of pieces of the puzzle that are all coming together. And I would, I would hope that the, the townspeople will look at that whole area with a, a lot of pride. Because, you know, we have worked extremely hard at keeping, you know, the character of Hebron yet to expand and allow businesses. And, and, you know, this will only be generating taxes for our, for our community for eternity. So, yeah, it's, it's a nice thing. It's.
It's a, it's going to make Hebron a destination. She has a following, her bread, where people are calling up from West Hartford and how do I find you? And they did that skit on TV and it just took off. I, I'm in contact with her quite often. And she's just ecstatic and that woman has energy like, like nobody's business. And I'm, I'm very, we're, we're lucky to have her because she has, she has big vision. She wants to take all three buildings. Mark knows that. She's got something simple now. She wants to open the Flower Girl, but now she wants to build it in the back behind the Gale House, the barn.
Oh.
She wants to make donuts and have ice cream back there. So, and I live there. That's my home right there. It's. I love it over there.
You're going to be going down there every day, Mark?
You're going to be eating weight, Mark, with all that fattening food, ice cream, donuts.
It, it is a temptation, but I, I resist the best I can. All right. And so thanks, Andy, for, for getting that done. I was wondering if they were going to finish that before the winter.
It took, it took a lot of coordination with a lot of people other than just me. So that was a committee that pulled that off, you know. And thanks to Fuller Paving for penciling us in because he's so booked up. There's only so many more days that you can pay. We normally don't pave after Thanksgiving for a lot of reasons. And we were very lucky to get that in there. And, and just to not drag this meeting on, I'm hoping we're going to be able to have Maple Fest next year and that'll, that'll enhance that area so much more.
Oh, yeah.
Beautiful.
I think we should all recognize and point out to people that when you're driving through other towns and you see their center, and then you drive through our center, our center is much more attractive. Take a look at Marlboro Center. Was that, Mark?
No, I'm, I'm just laughing at that. You gave him a little, you gave him a little smack down there. Okay.
It doesn't look as nice as ours. And it has business, yet it has a, it retained an open world character. It's not cluttered.
It has charm, that little area there.
That's, yes, yeah.
Okay, perfect. Gail?
I make a motion that we adjourn at eight forty-one.
All in favor?
All of us. Good meeting.